We'll call this Scottsboro City Work Section Monday, favor fourth to order. The indication given by Mr. Gary Stewart, the refusal agents given by Mr. Miller.
What I've done is after meeting with a fire marshal under this for a while and looking at what other cities have done, there is definitely a move that countries will help in safety reasons to limit open burning. If you go to most any city in Scottsboro size, they have an ordinance which is much stronger and much more effective than our 1980 ordinance. So I thought this of, how can we get from point A to point B with a limited amount of bureaucracy, a limited amount of fees, and still accomplish this? Now, you have to be very careful when you're writing ordinance, because for example, open burning, normally defined as a burning of any matter in such a manner that it produces the products of combustion resulting from the burning which are emitted directly into the ambient air. Well, that could cover smoking a cigar. That could cover a barbecue pit, that could cover about anything in the world that involves fire. Now, is that something that the city wants to get into, limiting the smoking of cigars outside, limiting barbecue, or fire pits? The answer, of course not. So what I worked at was where the problem is. The problem is with developments in fairly large tracts of property. And what this ordinance does, and it needs input from y'all, consideration by y'all, is we redefine open burning to say what I previously said, but in an area larger than black square feet, two by two, four by four, that would tend to cover most fires that most people use and form. Put the penalty clause open, we owe the penalty clause from 1980 as a $200 fine. I don't know where y'all want to go. Most misdemeanors, the fine can be up to $500 and up to six months in the city jail. As a general rule, I like to leave fines and things of that nature up to the courts. Instead of a fine or any imprisonment up to a certain amount. Of course, here in Alabama, we tend not to pay a lot of attention to the supremacy clause of the constitution. Our legislatures tend to pass laws which are totally enforceable. So because the supremacy clause in the state constitution, federal constitution, I put provision in this ordinance that nothing in this article applies to military and naval forces of the United States, the National Guard of the state, any agency of the state, or any agency or employee of the city in the profit performance of their duties, including but not noted to training sessions. Our fire marshal and I had talked about that before, and he was hyped on it, but we needed this kind of provision, and I agree with him on that. We don't want to pass, make it illegal for our fire departments to put out fires if they have started for training their employees. You have to be careful with broad, or writing things with a broad brush. Okay? Then any other fire that's less than whatever square feet I determined is not permitted, unless that person can go to the fire marshal and obtain a special exception or exemption. If it's too close to a building, he can deny it. If the wind's blowing outside and it's going to set fire to the neighborhood, he can deny it. If air quality is bad and we don't need anyone else in the atmosphere right now, he can deny it. Pretty much discretion to grant an undue hardship based on his professional opinion. As long as he exercises that professional opinion impartially and in his manner, it would work. It provides for him to allow reasonable conditions or requirements that may be necessary to minimize adverse impacts upon the community. But this is something that's relatively new that I drafted up to go along with and for your consideration with the other materials that you have received on the subject.
This ordinance is just supposed to impose on the fact that...
I mean, I'm not imposing anything. But this is just something that I thought would accomplish the goal that's been talked about with the least amount of bureaucracy and no cost.
Ninety percent of the ordinance is just one type of open burning means the burning of any matter in any area larger than that square feet, in such a manner that product of combustion resulting from the burning are emitted directly into the ambient air without passing through an adequate stack, duct, or chamber. That's basically it, right?
That's it. I'm saying we have a half...
It means anybody, I mean, no matter how small.
Yes, unless you define it, it's up to you to define it, how big, how small a fire. Remember, it's square footage.
What we're defining in that area, is what would require a permit or not?
Anything above the square footage that you set up would require a permit.
Anything below that would not.
Would not.
So we're not, we're no longer looking at this piece of equipment we were talking about before, that you'd have to dig a hole and...
It depend on the circumstances for the special exception. There might be places that that might be required, and there might be places that might not be required.
Where does that hang?
It's not in there. As long as it's, let's say y'all thought 10 square feet, 20 square feet. Any fire of less than 20 square feet would not be required without any government... Could be another if you want. Any fire over that amount would require fire marshal approval, under conditions that may be necessary.
That could mean that to include not even being allowed to burn it off, right?
If it was over 100 feet, yes. Or whatever number you set, that's the square footage.
So we could be talking about this piece of equipment?
Yes. That could be something...
So that rang a little more question for me is, who's going to have the equipment? How much is it going to cost? Is it going to be readily available at the price that people come forward? And once it, once we acquire it, and say one person in town has it, they have the monopoly, they can set it up, charge for it, and when we charge, are you either burning or with that equipment, or you don't burn it off? Why can't we just have the street department pick and stuff up? I know we already do that, but at a reasonable fee and... I just, I hate unknowns, and this is an unknown that's laying out there, that can come back to bite us, I think. Not that they're going to do anything wrong, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying, no matter every situation that they do, somebody's not going to like it.
That's true.
And we're going to have to deal with that. So I'd rather have what you can do, what you can't do, and have it all in writing, and decide if we're going to pass that or not. But that's just put the thought, I'm not talking, just something I have to worry.
I'd be more than happy to draft any ordinance that anybody wants to draft.
Now, I'm not complaining about what you're doing, but I just have some concerns in my own life. I've seen so many ordinances passed that basically weren't enforceable, or if they were, weren't what they really set out to be. And I'm not sure if we do one, that everybody even spoke down. Probably at some point, that we do it correctly.
So Mr. Kim, I'm sorry. If somebody wanted to burn just a small patch of leaves, they never went to the primary area.
That's correct.
So how do you feel about that?
There's a lot that goes on anyway, I don't get one but. We like to know where they are, so they can get contact.
And that's the only reason for the permit is for you to know if you're going to be burning here at this time.
Mr. Ketterman, is there a way that if we did something like redution that you have directed, adding something, say there is a large fire that made it this equipment, something that, specifications that fire marshal guidelines that we may have to go by before imposing someone having it? Is that something that we could add additional, so that not everybody's going to be required to have this $1,000 requirement?
And you could, what you would be doing is going from a permitted to a totally unpermitted to one where it passes through stages. Looking at anything at all.
The conversation we've already had to show that it's not an easy matter to just pass up equipment.
Would adding the requirement for this air curtain to our current ordinance, would that be okay?
Well, you know, it sort of depends. If you have an ordinance where you allow anything with 10 or 20 or even 100 square feet, and it's not being covered, and it's 150 square foot fire, it's like leaves and winds, that's one thing. Should that be required? Probably not. Whereas if you're dealing with five, or 10, or 20,000 square feet, and stumps, and trees, and things of that nature, I don't know. That would be more likely to...
So we're already sort of doing some of that anyway. Our problem lies in your densely populated residential properties. That's where it lies. But Scottsboro should need, we all know that, where there's a lot, there's some county property in city limits, there's some areas in the city where there's county right across the street from the city. So Scottsboro should need to make them the way it's laid out. And I think that's why this discussion, this is, Mr. Smith laid out, why it takes some time to go through this.
Chuck, are you familiar enough, I mean, obviously you see quite a bit of this to know when someone might need one of the curtains? Or is that something that you can decide as far as, size of fire or content of burning?
Probably not. An air curtain would eliminate that problem.
So we don't actually need to require this for every single burn, obviously, of a certain size, don't need your discretion whether they require a curtain or not?
Well, if Mr. Holt's instance, that block was straight across the panel, the wind was still blowing towards his house, for a week in time, that air curtain would not have a single problem out of that. But out there, it's a typical place, like Tupelo Park, for instance, where there's a lot of rural area, agricultural area, you're not going to get any complaints off, pretty much unless they're already tied, there's, you're not going to get any complaints out there. It's just, it's where it's at.
On open burn, on open burn, talking about the square footage, Mr. Kim, if we decide on the, whatever square feet, anything over that, then it could be put on the fire marshal's shoulders or the chief's shoulders to determine whether or not, if we decide to go with a fire curtain. If anything, that necessary or not.
Yes.
I mean, that could be written on that.
But I know he's felt like really should be a part of it, incorporated into that. And of course, the penalties, the permits, and when it says on there right now, open burning, we've got restricted locations of not less than 50 feet from the structure, and adequate provisions made to prevent fire from spreading within 50 feet of a structure, you know, recreational fires are like 25 feet. So it's, you know, it's, I don't know if we need to try to, like you're saying, get a square footage thing on it. And we have the permit fees, and that we can revoke it. So I know that you feel like these are important and need to be incorporated into this, so I think we need to take more time and look it over and look at it with Mr. Kim or Mr. Brian, and see exactly where we need to go with it.
And I'd like to say too, why don't we just, we're not proposing to pass it, right? And why have Mr. Kim review another ordinance that we're pretty sure that not going to flow? Why don't each one of us sit down, look it over, put down what we can live with individually, and then combine those together, and go through and see what happens?
I think that's an excellent idea.
Anybody else have a thing on fire burn warrants? No, we'll move to the second item, first Monday's fees.
One, one really didn't, I put in your packets all the ordinances that we've come up with from first month to the last, and it's around first Monday. And I think, kind of leaning towards maybe Mr. Kim will write a new ordinance, new one from there, from speaking to the mayor, about the fees, what you think, which direction you want to go on.
What discussion do we have on this? Who prepared this copy?
Which one? Debbie Taylor, who oversees that, she does all the registrations of space, of places.
So we average 6,000?
Oh, that is my note. It's, that's the income, that's about the average income per year, yes.
And our expenses are 2,000.
Well, that's really...
Down on the report.
Yes, we put it there each month. And we would continue to do that.
Waiving the fees to try to get more excitement up there on first Monday, more spaces and...
That was my suggestion. Whatever you want to say.
But if someone wanted a critique or spot, they would have to come down to, come to City Hall and get a...
They could even just call. We have a map of all the spots, and so each year we could reserve their spot for them for that year, something that'd be just known once a year.
Okay.
And so, you know, if you called, it's an open spot, 52 or whatever, you just put your name down, that'd be all our to, no one would change hands, just so that they would know. And Mr. Morgan has agreed to maybe keep a copy of that map up there, if somebody had a question, they could come to him and say, this spot's open or it's not. He's willing to, I think you've done that in the past, too.
That's right, that's right. We've done it.
That's a way, that was really the major complaint that I heard from the vendors, was, well, I've had this spot for 20 years, there's no guarantee I'll get it. All we do is just reserve it for them.
Is it feasible to assess the fee for those who want to reserve a spot, to basically not make money, but to break even on the portable tools?
You can do whatever you want. I don't know how the vendors would feel that, okay, some are paying and some are not. Is that what you're saying? If you reserve, you pay, if you don't reserve, you don't pay?
If you reserve a spot, I mean, that way you're guaranteed a space, and, I mean, not anywhere near the 120 or whatever, I guess the year would be, but...
I'd be happy to comment if Mr. President would allow. Go ahead, Gary.
Thank you. There's been an issue, of course, the current longtime vendors up there, they're reliable, show up every month, recharge more than somebody that did not, were not, was not reliable. You know, the vendors who reserve a spot pay $10 a year, even though during six months part of the year, there was actually no charge from other people. So that's, you know, the reliable vendors basically felt that was kind of grossly unfair, you know? So let's not try, whatever y'all decide on, let's not create a disparity once again over the fees, please. But whatever, you know, if you want $5, that's fine. Whatever you want, free's great. I think I remember Mr. Smith suggesting that before, and we had some discussions.
Yes, I remember.
And we said, well, hey, you know, that was kind of saying like Brent was saying here, Councilman Miller, well, you know, hey, you shouldn't get anything free, or, you know, there should always be a charge or something. Well, hey, it has been degraded to such an extent that, let's try something new. You know, maybe the free thing might work, it'd get the folks sitting up down at markets down the road up here, they have to pay. So if they see, hey, oh well, hey, it's free now for a burn, I think you would probably help a little bit. So I agree with you.
Yeah, you're saying free's good, well, look, we did the water pump over here next to the Richter, free, and probably the best thing we've ever done in this town, because it's free. And if it's possible, that first month, you could do better if it were free. We've tried everything in the world, starting like an Indy 500 race, to buy all the...
Let's not do that.
No, I don't want to do that.
You remember that.
But my point being, we've tried everything else, why not go back to the way it was when it was successful?
I'm not trying to keep anybody from getting anything free, I'm just looking at covering some of our expenses.
I hear you, and that's not a problem, whatever y'all decide will be fine. You know, but, you know, please be fair about it. And another thing, we, and I've talked to the mayor about this before, and we've talked to other councils, and that's advertising. Advertising's really needed at this day and age. And I've stood up here and spoke about this before, and had people from media, sales come in. Advertising's not too expensive on television, when you really look at it. And the advertising program that we had looked at before, offered the mayor about it, doesn't have to be just first month. You can advertise Scottsboro, you can advertise Goose Pond Colony, the industrial possibilities that are here in Scottsboro, advertising on television, particularly on the table, would be a good move for y'all to consider.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Any other discussion on this?
I think we're going to, it should be designed for everyone, free. If we're going to operate to, if there's someone wants a particular spot, let them just call and say, I want this spot. And I think we're, I don't think we're having a plan with anyone about that. And I also feel like it would bring people in, and of course, next month, for the weather if it breaks, that's from March to the fall is when people will start coming back and setting up. And I think once word gets out of this and advertising, if they see they can come back up there and not have to pay, I think it'll draw the person to be proud back, because I for want to do it, one of them, walking around. So I think it should be great for everyone.
It's a fun thing, you know? You get to meet people, and...
Social fun.
And of course, I always liked making money, so...
And that's easy enough to manage, but doesn't them just call and put anyone out? I mean, that's pretty essential, isn't it? And we have a, already have a this, but those, and vendors anyway.
That ordinance would have to be completed, correct? So we haven't started that yet.
It's been a minute, it's been...
Here are approximately 20 second, little pages in the ordinance, and I think it could be reduced and simplified to two pages.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members, Mr. Mayor, citizens of Scottsboro. Just a brief introduction of the gentleman who will be giving you the short briefing today on nuclear security and nuclear, excuse me, nuclear safety and nuclear history. Mr. David Lockbaum is the director of the Nuclear Safety Project for the Union of Concerned Scientists. Mr. Lockbaum served many years as a nuclear power plant operator for the TDA, and also served as nuclear technology instructor with Nuclear Regulatory Mission. Mr. Lockbaum has testified before Congress and the NRC on many occasions concerning nuclear safety, and has provided each on many occasions with informed analysis of nuclear industry operations. For that reason, our local environmental group, Belfont Efficiency and Sustainability Team, has asked Mr. Lockbaum to make a presentation to y'all today, so that when y'all are asked to make important decisions concerning Belfont Nuclear Plant, you'll be better advised on nuclear power issues which may come for you. Mr. Lockbaum.
Thank you, Gary, and thank you, members of the council, for indulging this time tonight. I know it made it worth your while. Want to talk to you briefly with, start out with something called the bathtub curve due to its shape. It explains the failure rate versus time for cars, nuclear power plants, people, and other objects. The one part of the curve, one end of the curve is the break-in phase, where bad assembly or bad products can cause failure rate to be high. The opposite end of the curve is the wear-out phase, where aging, brittleness, rusting cause failures also to go up. Want to talk a little, start with talking about the break-in phase of the nuclear bathtub curve. Over all time in the United States, a total of 263 nuclear power reactors have been ordered. Forty-eight percent of those never went into operation. They were canceled during some phase of construction, including all the way apart of during startup testing, they were canceled. 132 reactors, roughly half of those that were ordered, ultimately went into reaction, into operation, and four reactors are currently under construction. Of the 132 that went into operation, several didn't make it out of the break-in phase. They were broken during the break-in phase. The Three Mile Island accident, the Fermi One accident in 1966, the SL One accident in Idaho, we killed every single worker at the plant. Those are all occurred in early on in the plant's life, well, it's the end of those reactors' lifetime, but early on in the plant's scheduled lifetime of approximately 40 years, they just didn't make it out of the break-in phase. If you look at the other end of the curve, the wear-out phase, for the plants that do successfully get built, the ones that do successfully start to operate, the ones that do successfully get out of the break-in phase, there have been some problems on the wear-out phase as well. All of these reactors are licensed initially for 40 years of lifetime. That's what the owners, the communities, the workers expect the plant to operate for. To date, 28 reactors have permanently shut down across the United States. None of those reactors made it to 40 years. The average operating lifetime of those 28 was 14.3 years. 14.3 years out of a planned 40-year lifetime. Of the reactors, there've been another 41 that have had to shut down for at least a year to repair costly safety problems. Eleven of those reactors did it twice, they had two multiple year shutdowns. The reason, that's an economic burden, and something for local communities is sometimes to benefit, because a lot of workers are brought in to fix these safety issues. So there's some plus sides to that. But the reason I bring that to your attention is that sometimes those are the reasons why owners go into town, decide not to pay the expense of restarting the plant. That's why some of these reactors shut down well ahead of their 40-year lifetimes. And that occurred across the country. That's not an issue of one bad owner, it's not an issue of one bad reactor type, it's due to different economic reasons, different management problems across the country. Two years ago, the Fukushima plant in Japan had a very severe accident, three weeks shy of its 40th birthday. Some have contended that that's not a wear-out phase, that's not an aging related issue, it's an active nature. Tsunamis happened, could have happened in the first move of the plant's life, it could have happened in three weeks shy of its 40th birthday, it did. But it's important to recognize that probably five years before that tragedy, workers at the company that owned it identified that its seawall protecting it from tsunamis wasn't high enough for the worst case tsunami. Had that discovery been made early on, would the owner have spent the money to heighten the seawall to protect it over 40 years? A decision decided not to do for only three or four more years on the operating lifetime. Today, Japan is building taller seawalls around all the surviving nuclear power plants, regardless of their age, but it's an expensive way to close the barn door after the horse is out. The national nuclear outlook today is that we have four reactors currently being built, two in Georgia and ten in South Carolina. Based on past history, two of those will likely make it to the finish line, and two others likely will not. No guarantees, but that's past performance based on the odds. We currently, last October, the owner of Wisconsin announced that it was currently closing the Kawani plant in Wisconsin in April this year, again, ahead of its 40-year lifetime. Its demise was due to natural gas prices, which were cheaper than nuclear power being generated for, so it's difficult to sell nuclear electricity in that marketplace, and the owner's pulling the plug approximately five weeks, with five weeks notice. We currently have four reactors that have been shut down for at least a year and may or may not restart. There's a one in Florida that currently has a $1 billion price tag for fixing, and it's a relatively small reactor, so its owner is currently looking at not fixing it. Where will we get the electricity that that plant no... looking at not fixing it. Where do we get the electricity that that plant no longer generates? There's one in Nebraska and two in California that may also, may or may not restart. One of the reactors in California last year laid off seven hundred workers because its owner wanted to conserve money to determine whether it would or would not restart the plant. Those workers had about a week's notice that they no longer had a job. With that national nuclear outlook, obviously, the question before you is the local nuclear outlook. And unfortunately, on that forecast, I have more of a bowling ball than a crystal ball for saying what things in future here will be. There's important questions like will the reactors that operate at Belfont ever operate? Or how long will the nearby reactors in Brown's Ferry in Limestone County, how long will they operate? In that case, that time is a bowling ball. I can't, any number I give you would be pulled out of that. There's no way I can project those answers. But the one thing I can tell you with the crystal ball part of forecasting is that if the Belfont reactors are completely going into operation, they as well as the Brown's Ferry reactors will someday shut down. They're not immortal. That day will come. The only thing I can't tell you is when that day will be. Looking at the past, at the operating history of the United States, that day is most often a surprise. It's not, it generally doesn't come with advanced warning for the company, the workforce, and the communities. There are some bad examples where that shock caused the initial reaction, the impact on the local communities to be pretty bad. The revenue stopped, the workforce, people left to find jobs elsewhere. So I guess the message I'd like to leave with you tonight is to perhaps do some case studies at some of these plants, plants that were canceled or the plants that operated and permanently shut down. Talk to your counterparts at the city and the county level to see if there's anything they did or they would have done differently to better prepare for that day when it comes. Did they set aside any money? Did they have plans in place for worker retraining to keep the workforce in the communities, keep the money at home? Were there any lessons learned from these communities? I know of some. I don't, we've done just some work with our colleagues across the country. There's a plant in California that shut down about fifteen years ago that it was somewhat a surprise, but they had approximately six to eight months to plan for it. And they started working with the company and various agencies to replace electricity with non-nuclear generators, to keep the jobs in the community, keep the revenues nearby, and also to keep electricity rates for the rate pairs down, which isn't something you directly concern on, but you, also consumer as well, so you'd be interested in keeping rates down. So I think that was a success story based on the amount of planning they had. They made the most of it. And they minimized the impact of that plant's closing on the communities. Again, whether Belfont's finished or not, whether Brown's Ferry operates for fifty more years or ten more years, the day will come when there's going to be life after nuclear. So I think there's some lessons to be learned from some of these case studies that you're not going to have to face immediately, obviously, either Belfont or Brown's Ferry. But longer term, it might be beneficial to look at some of those, see if there's any things that could be done along the way to better prepare for that day if it comes or when it comes. Along those lines, I'd be glad to help you with any resources, references, or anything I have to help you decide to do some case studies, share with you whenever permission we have on as individual cases. If we can be of help down the road, just letting you know, I'd be glad to help. You've invested some time of hearing me. If I can return dividend on that investment, I'd be glad to down the road. So thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Dave. Don Hope.
My name is Don Hope, and I'd like to thank Mayor Parker Nix and every one of you city council members, Chief White, Marshall Bryant. I'm very pleased to be here. I've heard tonight so far that you're taking this seriously, you're going to be in there to study. And my whole concern about this is hell. Not everybody's affected by it, but my wife is, I know other people are. And I've never had a problem breathing, but it's very scary when you see me trying to breathe and they can't. And she's had to go take breathing treatments before. And this can affect not just elderly, but young folks. And while the government has helped the contractors and people clearing land, it hasn't taken and not paid the considerations of residents. And that's what y'all are looking at tonight. And that's why I feel really good about this. Stumps, you can't, they got so much dirt and ruin them. If the contractor piles it up, if you've ever had a fire, and most old folks have, and you've got a culprit agitated, the ash smothers the fire. It makes it last longer. It smokes and it just keeps on and on. And that's what the burner curtain does. It will consume, I've read up on it, around ninety-eight percent of what's there, that very little smoke and particulates from getting into the air, what you talked about earlier when you have an open burning. And I realize it's not feasible for all cases. But you take a high-façade lock, it just got trees, and let me be sure, the leaves got trees and they're pine trees. And as Marshall Bryant indicated, it takes a long time to burn that green. It just sits there and smothers. And they let it burn during the night, nobody stays. It just keeps on. The next day, they come back and pile back on again. I know you talked about leaf burning. One time that my granddaughter came over, and that's another time. She comes to visit and went by the yard. It makes it bad when you smoke it up and you have to go back in the house. So I went and looked to see where the fire was coming from, the smoke, it was drifting up. It was a few walks away. But somebody must have had a pile of leaves that was fifteen, twenty-foot diameter. And you don't see the blades, it just slow burned. And I talked to the contractor, and I got out, I talked to him, and he said it was him. So I told him what it was doing, and he apologized. I talked to the contractor that burned next to me, he apologized. But it came back the next day and did it again. And he knew that his man left that day and piled it up. And then you need fire to let it burn and get hot. And they don't always do this. And it smothers, and that was my concern. It's been brought up to you before. It just lasts for days and days. And when it comes into your house, what do you do? And that is a problem. And I appreciate y'all's serious consideration, looking to do something to, and I realize you got to be careful how you come up with it so it's enforceable or, you know, how to fix people. But I know one time, and I wouldn't want to be in y'all's positions, and someone spoke before about, well, you did not want to make everybody happy. Well, I remember one time when I first go into church and the preacher and I had this problem in the church, and I talked to him about it. And he just lied and says, you don't make everybody happy. So I thank you again for your time. And I hope that eventually that you come up with something that's beats what we got for sure.
Thank you, Don. We'll go on to reports. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Charles and Ronnie told me today that they've started working back at the city park and the boat ramp down there. And I think you'll have that done in the next couple of weeks. Not really. We're working to get it done pretty quick, hopefully by the end of January. But that's a project that's been needed and we have to work on. A few weeks ago, I told y'all, a few months ago now probably, that we'd applied for the ATRIP, which is some state money road projects for, presented by Governor Bentley last year. There were three rounds to that grant, to that project. And on the second round, we heard today that we had been approved for our two road projects that we had applied for. And that was the resurfacing of Porter Road and Woods Cove Road over to Parks Avenue with some cover extensions, and also cover replacement and resurfacing the Ridge Dale Road. The Porter Woods Cove Road total cost is estimated to be two million, nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And the Ridge Dale Road cost is estimated totally to be one million, three-hundred-and-three thousand dollars. We're still working on exactly how much our portion of that will be. And hopefully by next week, we can come back to you, give a Mr. Willer, and see what we have available to do our part matching. Charles, is there a deadline on this or anything about completion or when we got to have it done or we got to accept?
It has to be by a certain time, but I don't remember the date.
The project has to be there. Okay. That's really the only deadline to work against. And I think that's like summer or fall, even I believe.
Fall or actually even the end of the next year.
Okay. So we have a little bit of time. You know, we need to go ahead and if we accept these projects, a big part will be coming up with a matching. Hopefully, we'll have something for you next week on that. But we're very fortunate. I appreciate Charles's work on that. He had a lot of good information there, engineers that assist him who helped in those projects. I think we use two different engineers on each project. So that's something for us to look forward to, and hopefully we'll be able to complete that. That's all I have.
Mr. Smith?
Oh, I don't have anything. Good to hear today that the kid, custody situation, sat by them, they resolved, and the kid's safe. We're all thankful for that.
Mr. McBride?
Just thinking about my finger tonight and vinyl up pulling, I miss Mr. Schuster saying recycle. So I'm going to put that in tonight now. Let's recycle.
Mr. Miller?
I don't have anything on that.
Mr. Gary Stewart?
I don't have anything either.
So with that, we'll adjourn.